Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Monday, February 25th regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council. Hang on just a second here, and I'm gonna turn on my microphone so I can do here. There we go. Welcome, everybody, to today's regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council this Monday, February 25th. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please, and get us started?
Yeah. Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Getty? Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
If all of you would please join me for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer, much appreciated. Thank you. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Quentin Hart, our word-for-council person. Mr. Hart?
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated.
I'm ready now.
You're ready.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda as proposed and also to approve the minutes of February 18th regular session.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding the agenda or the minutes either? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B-18, I believe, and also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we pay our bills' payments, which will be read by our finance chair.
The bills this week are $3,752,673.56. That's three, comma, seven, five, two, comma, six, seven, three, point, five, six.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding the consent agenda? Roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. And item number 12 on our consent agenda, we have several new appointments and reappointments both to several of our boards, and I always like to recognize those folks that step up and volunteer their time to help us make the city run. So, I'm gonna call several names. If you're here, stand up for me, please. Susan Chezik. John Moore. Excuse me, Jason Moore. Geraldine Thornsberry. I know Bob's here. Bob Rysinger, why don't you stand up, please? Bob has been reappointed to the Community Development Board, so thank you very much. I know you do an outstanding job there, and it's much appreciated. So, thank you, Bob, for re-upping for another term. Maxine Tisdale. John Berry. John, thank you for, also, you are a new appointment to our Community Development Board, so you're stepping into the lion rings for the first time tonight. So, congratulations, and thank you very much for stepping up and volunteering of your time for the city. It's much appreciated. Sarah Vunick. Sarah here. Gona Buchanan. Bill Blake. David Deeds, I didn't see. Diane Phelps, I didn't see. Janice Waterman. Corina Dillon. All of those folks, whose names I read, we do extend our gratitude from the city for you, again, volunteering your time and stepping up to helping us out on these very important appointments to our boards and commissions, so that is much appreciated. Somebody take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and ask for the fiscal year 2013 Asphalt Overlay Program Contract Number 833.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, did you have any written objections on file to item number two?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against our asphalt overlay program? A second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. That's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second. That's a roll call vote also. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second. That's a roll call vote also. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to mention I typically don't support waiting the second and third
readings, but I do think this thing has been talked about enough, and so I'm gonna support that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. So, the motion does carry.
Make the motion then to consider and pass for the second and third times and to adopt the ordinance.
Second. That's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries. I might mention Mr. Schmidt, since you brought it up, which was a good idea, that for those that might be confused, we're talking about this, it seems like we've talked about this several times before, which we have, there was an error on the legal description on the original ordinance that passed, so all we're doing is correcting some legal description errors from the first time. Nothing new is happening. Item number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
Number four is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, that's to amend the development agreement approved on January 7th, 2013, with the Sunnyside South Edition LLC, to update the legal description of the project area generally located between Galactic Drive and West 4th Street, west of Ainsborough, to Sunnyside South Edition LLC.
Second. That's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
There are none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number four on tonight's agenda? A second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. That's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries. I might mention Mr. Schmidt, since you brought it up, which was a good idea, that for those that might be confused, we're talking about this, it seems like we've talked about this several times before, which we have, there was an error on the legal description on the original ordinance that passed, so all we're doing is correcting some legal description errors from the first time. Nothing new is happening. Item number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
Number four is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, that's to amend the development agreement approved on January 7th, 2013, with the Sunnyside South Edition LLC, to update the legal description of the project area generally located between Galactic Drive and West 4th Street, west of Ainsborough Avenue.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file to item number four?
There are none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number four on tonight's agenda? A second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file to item number four?
There are none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number four on tonight's agenda? A second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the said amendment to the development agreement and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. That's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Item four passes. Item number five, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
Move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the request of Tony Hupp to vacate the east four feet of a platted 16-foot wide sanitary sewer easement at the northeast corner of Bismarck Avenue and Ainsborough Avenue located in Galloway First Edition.
Second. Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections to this item on file?
There are none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number five? A second time?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing and also add the recommendation of approval of planning, programming, and zoning commission.
Second. Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns regarding this item?
No, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance vacating the east four feet of a platted 16-foot wide sanitary sewer easement at the northeast corner of Bismarck Avenue and Ainsborough Avenue located in the Galloway First Edition.
Second. That's a roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the rules.
Second. That's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Good. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing said sale and conveyance and authorize city attorney to prepare and deliver deed accordingly.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Takes care of those. Let's go into the resolutions. And Counsel, if someone would take number six by itself, we have some guests in the audience that we'd like to bring up and speak to about this item. Number six, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number six, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving contract with Dectronics, Inc., of Brookings, South Dakota, in the amount of $715,000 for the purchase of a new scoreboard, video, and audio system at Young Arena with the Waterloo Blackhawks providing $245,000, and Blackhawk County Gaming Association providing $470,000.
Second. Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this item? That's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Did you say? Were they gonna talk about it or something?
Who's gonna bring them up?
Oh.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Now, let's celebrate, guys. Doug, and Chris, and PK, why don't you guys come up, please, if you would? This is worthwhile, I think, to have just a little mini-celebration, anyway. Doug? Nice to see you. Chris, how are you?
Thank you.
Coach?
You.
How are you guys?
You.
This, I'm gonna have one of you say something, but, you know, this is something that we can be very thankful for, again, to Blackhawk County Gaming, they've stepped up, but the Waterloo Blackhawks have stepped up big time to, for this great new scoreboard that we're gonna have in Young Arena for the Blackhawks for next year, if I understand correctly, and I think one of you have something for me that I'm sweating a little bit and anxiously awaiting for here. A check from the Waterloo Blackhawks to the city of Waterloo, and I don't see an amount in there, but I'm assuming it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 and some odd thousand dollars. Would I be correct?
214,000.
214,000 dollars from the Blackhawks. Guys, thank you very much, and I'd like you, Doug, to say a couple of words, if you would, about what this new scoreboard's gonna mean for the Blackhawks and for the program.
Well, first off, thank you very much for agreeing to do this. This is an amazing project. It's going to be, it's gonna be a game changer as far as the experience at Young Arena when you come to a hockey game. We're catching up with a few places, and we're blowing by a lot of places. So, it should be great. I can't thank enough Paul Hudding, Chris Dolan, the whole staff, it's been a collaborative effort. As we went through all the different options that we would have, it was great, and we're very excited about it, and we can't wait to have you all out to watch it on the first game next year.
Very good. Doug, thank you. And Waterloo Blackhawks are having a good season. We're winning. We split this weekend, I think, one with Dubuque, which was a big one, and then we lost in Lincoln, that got it, and a shootout, was it a shootout or something?
We got them.
Yeah, we got them, okay. Anyway, if you don't follow the Blackhawks, you're really missing a treat. It's a lot of fun, it's a fast-paced game, and these kids give 110% all the time, and thanks to you and Chris and Doug for what you do down there, guys. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. You bet. You bet. So, this just...
Doesn't say buck on it, anyway.
Tried to walk by Michelle Whedon with that check, and she wouldn't let me get by her. All right, let's go ahead and do 17, let's do the next three, please. Seven, eight, and nine.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole, please.
Seven is a resolution approving the 2014 golf fee schedule as recommended by Leisure Services. Eight is a resolution approving award of bid to Mathias Landscaping of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $48,665.27 for the Gates Park Golf Course Verden Creek Erosion Project. And nine is a resolution approving the sale of used Jacobson LF 3400 Fairway Unit to Turf Works of Johnston, Iowa in the amount of $8,000.
Second. Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding seven, eight, excuse me, seven, eight, or nine? Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, on item number seven, and I don't know if we would necessarily wanna consider making it part of the motion, but I had several calls from our senior golfers with the fee increases, and I support the fee increases because I do believe our rates have been, you know, too low. But, the suggestion I had, and I would support this, is for our season ticket holders to make that season ticket effective January 1st through December 31st. So, on the rare occasion like last year where we had a little golf play in January, we had a little golf play in December, those folks would, you know, still get a little bit of a break versus the fee increase, because my experience when I did play in December and January that year, we had a lot of out-of-town people that wouldn't be affected by what I'm proposing, so it was just a thought I'd like to share.
Paul?
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director, would like the chance to take that back to the commission, and you serve as our liaison, Steve. I guess I'd like them to have a chance to weigh in on that, so if we could pass this tonight, basically what we're doing tonight will allow us to get our house in order for the budget process we're about to enter into here real quickly. I don't see that that would be a big change as far as the amount of dollars in, but it would be a policy issue I'd like to have the commission act on, and we can certainly come back with that, if that's satisfactory.
Mr. Hart?
Paul, I had a quick question. I've gotten calls, too, but my main ones were from, well, I guess they were seniors as well, but the jump of $100, and was it discussed to do something incrementally like 750, but the going from the 700 to 800 was a shock for a few people? And then I was wondering, with the season ticket holders, do you know what the average amount of rounds they play per year?
Well, lucky for me, JB's here, our golf manager, but I'm not sure he has all of that information, but JB, if you wanna step up to the mic, you can, can it help me?
Could we do one thing, as JB's stepping up also, Paul?
Certainly.
For clarification purposes, why don't you tell everybody when these fees go into effect, please?
That's a good, yeah, good point of clarification. Counsel has already acted for this upcoming 2013 season, we're in the process of selling tickets now, no increase. This is for 2014, and the reason we're doing it so early is so that we can clarify and quantify for the budget what our revenues will be, or closely, I mean, there's always the weather consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
JB?
Sure. To address Councilman Hart's question, I guess the increase of $100 for that adult pass versus the $50, we're trying to put a significant dent in our deficit, what the general fund supports in the golf operations. The proposal put forth would make about a $77,000 dent in that deficit, so it's really, you know, we're open to discussion, but to make a significant increase in our revenue, that's where our goal was there.
So, we're losing each year on our courses?
Correct, yeah. The golf courses are subsidized anywhere from 150 to 200,000 dollars a year, and we're looking to reduce that subsidy.
And then, did you, what's the average, average amount of rounds a ticket order pays? Is it 50, 25?
I don't think, it would be north of that 50 number. I don't think that we have a set average. It's hard to track that.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean, we're here in the low, a couple hundred rounds for some folks.
Further? Mr. Hart? Anyone else? Thank you, Paul. Thank you, JB.
Thank you.
Are there further questions or comments on any of the three items at this time, Counsel? A roll call vote on all three, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Vote, no, I can't split my vote up on this, but the $100 difference for 2014, but
Deere 7700 Fairway mowers. Number 11, I move to adopt a resolution approving award of Iowa Department of Transportation state bid to John Deere Company in the amount of $39,224.68 with the delivery by Waterloo Implement for the purchase of one John Deere 5093E utility tractor minus trades totaling $7,500 for a total purchase amount of $31,724.68. And in 12, I move to adopt a resolution approving submission of an Iowa Safe Routes to School Grant in the amount of $72,000 for a proposed George Washington Carver Academy Sidewalk infield and acceptance of 10-year maintenance agreement for the responsibility of the proposed sidewalk.
Second. Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding 10, 11, or 12? Pardon me, not sure what's happening to my voice tonight, but it's, Mr. Greenwood?
What's the chances on the 12 of getting that grant? Is it pretty high?
I don't know. Sandy, do we know, what do we know?
San Francisco Superintendent of Traffic Operations, we don't know. We don't, I mean, we're hoping, you know, that we do get the money, but there's no guarantee. It's just a grant we're going after, so.
We've received some in the past for...
Yes, we have.
And intercog's helping us with that, Bob.
Yes.
It's, you know, I think we've got as good a chance as any, but, you know, federal money's getting tighter, too.
Yeah, okay.
We've written a good application, so hopefully.
And that's all outside of the 63 rebuild? That's east of there, correct, on Esther?
Yes, it's from Logan to on Esther up to Sherman.
Thank you.
Further? Roll call votes, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
Number 13 is a resolution approving a supplemental agreement number two with AECom in the amount of $17,900 for the fiscal year 2013 San Suzy Wingdam repairs, contract number 846. 14 is a resolution approving a submission of application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for $4,650,000 to be used for the multifamily rental unit production, new construction program round five. 15 is a resolution approving the intent for a development agreement for the construction of a multi-floor residential and commercial project at the Upper Plaza site with the potential for TIF rebates for 20 years at 42% per year if the incentives are not awarded.
Second. Counsel, before we vote on that, I know there's at least one person in the audience that's here because of items 14 and 15. Well, these are not hearings. You all know that I normally allow people to speak on items if they have a mind to. So if anybody would like to speak on item 13, 14, or 15, any of those three, since they're all up for a vote, now would be the time to do so. Please come to the microphone, give us your name and address and get, limit your comments to three minutes.
David Dietz, JSA Development, 922 Mulberry Street. Certainly we're supportive of new development downtown Waterloo and we certainly like new construction, but as you know from our experience, we prefer rehabilitation of existing structures and we certainly want Mr. Sherman and his projects to be successful in the future, but we hope it's, should be remembered that it's equally beneficial to incentivize investment in our city's core, both for new construction as well as rehabilitation of existing structures. So again, we wish Mr. Sherman well and we hope the project goes well, but rehabilitation is important as well.
Thank you, Mr. Dietz.
Good evening. I'm Jackie Nicolás. I'm Vice President of Development with Sherman Associates, 233 Park Avenue South, Minneapolis. And I'm here tonight just to introduce myself again and to talk about this project, the 58-unit development in its new construction, about 50% of the units will be affordable to people at or below 80% of area median income, which is a really good point, price point for downtown housing. And the other bounds of the units would be market rate housing. It's really exciting to get new market rate housing anywhere in downtown areas. In the Midwest, we have the luxury of lower price points for our rents and our constructions cost just the same. So it's exciting to do new construction in downtown. As you know, we own and manage a Russell Lamson in downtown Waterloo, so this builds on our current inventory, which is important to us. George has not sold an apartment that he's developed in the 35 years that he's been developing units. So when we come into community, like, we like to build on our units in a community. Russell Lamson is highly successful, it's doing very well, we're 100% leased, so we're excited to add units to that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Just one quick question. About how many projects, if you can qualify that, does the Sherman Associates own across the country? Can you, can you?
We are, we are concentrated in the upper Midwest. We have a couple buildings in Colorado, we have some, a small development in California, but the majority of our units are in the upper Midwest. In Iowa, we have currently leased over 500 units, about 300 in Des Moines, about 100 in Cedar Rapids, 100 in Waterloo, and we have a 60-unit building under construction in Davenport. They're a mix of rehabbed and new construction. So like I said, we're looking to build our Iowa inventory. Of course, because we're based in Minneapolis, a lot of our units are in Minneapolis, but we manage and own about 65 apartment units.
Okay.
Sorry, 6,500.
6,500 apartments.
Yes.
Thank you, Jackie. Appreciate it. Anybody else have any questions?
Just a second, Jerry.
Let her leave the, just a second. Yes, Mr. Hart?
I was reading on the information for the application, it indicated, as documented, $3 million of CDBG would be leverage and if you did not receive that award, the project will not proceed?
Yes, that is very much the case. It has to do, again, with the market rents in Waterloo and honestly, in Davenport and Cedar Rapids and Des Moines, not being high enough to support what rental rates would need to be to build a new building. And as you know, the site is very tight and small and compact and challenging and that only increases the construction costs.
Thank you, Jackie.
Could I ask one other question? Could you tell specifically how many units there would be and then how much parking you have for that?
There would be 58 units and we try to get one-to-one parking. Right now, our current site plan shows 56 under the building and the plaza and we would need to work with the city to identify another two or three for, to get our one-to-one ratio that our lenders like to see. We find that in urban housing, we don't necessarily need one-to-one, however, almost every single one of our lenders and investors requires one-to-one. We do have a building in Des Moines, for example, where we have 80% of our units have a parking spot. So we're not, we're not as high as our lenders that typically ask for that one-to-one.
And then on the Russell Lamson building, what ratio is that as far as the income requirements?
It's 60% of area median income and 100% of the units are locked in at that for 30 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Paul? Do all your projects need to use some type of tax credits? Do you use this plain market rate, traditional financing? I mean, I see this area here at the expo and then the Plaza Amphitheater as a, you know, upscale type of housing. I'm not sure if I want to support subsidized housing in that area because I think it's our primary area of our city.
And let me differentiate a bit. This is not low-income housing tax credit financing. It's community development block rent disaster recovery funds. The federal government has given states impacted by the 2008 flood, these disaster recovery funds. This is the fifth round that has been issued by the Iowa Economic Development Authority. And they've gone through many competitive processes, but like CDBG funds, there's affordability requirements. CDBG funds have to hit a national objective and one of them is supplying low and moderate income housing. This is 80% of area median income, which of course is much higher than 60% of area median income. Also, the affordability timeline is 10 years. The affordability timeline for low-income housing tax credits is 30 years. So this tool offers much-needed gap financing at the same time having a short timeline on those rent affordabilities. Also, only 50% of the units are required, or 51% of the units must be affordable. It gives a good bridge because even in Des Moines right now, it's very difficult to obtain rents high enough to finance a new construction project. This is, this is going to be a new project. There's no other housing surrounding it, so it's going to be seen there by itself for a few years. So during that, those years until it has other housing around it, we'll have that cushion of affordability, that $3 million will really help bridge that gap that develops because of the lower rents that we can expect.
Mr. Mayor?
And they're not low rents by any standard.
And, you know, something that I'd like to speak to, Jackie, is that the 80% of median income for here, Bob, for a family of two, a couple, young couple, is about $42,000, give or take a couple of bucks. So that's, you know, we're still talking about an awful lot of young professionals, teachers, first-year police officers, city workers, all kinds of folks, nurses that are going to fall into that category of being moderate income or whatever, affordable income. So we're not talking about necessarily low income for this. And I think that, you know, you're going to find a great deal of professional people are going to live in this and meet the financial requirements to do so. Mr. Hart?
And I wanted, just a comment and then a question, but one of the things that I would try to do as a councilperson is steer clear of where a certain person can live at or a certain type of development, because if we don't have opportunities where people that may have moderate income and may not make as much as other people, if we don't open up opportunities in various places, then you get a concentration of people in one particular area. So I'm thinking that everything that they're talking about, we're talking about equality, a quality building, a quality structure, and just because you may not have the most money does not, is not going to ensure that you're a bad tenant. So I think some of us need to steer clear of that type of conversation because we don't want to discriminate about where a certain individual can live based upon how much money they make.
Ms. Cole? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were going to... Are you? I cut you off. I thought you were going to...
No, I don't have anything. I, can I, may I comment for that, on that briefly? We find some of our most successful urban projects actually have market rate units affordable and a couple different segments of affordable housing options. And that way, anybody that applies for a unit can qualify to rent a unit. And a really good example is the first project we did in downtown Des Moines is a city block. It has high-end condominiums, 34 right along the river, and then it has 111 apartment units in the same block, sharing the same parking, that are market rate, low-income housing tax credits, and home-funded, down to 40% of area median income. And it's been 100% leased for eight years. So it works. And so we love these and we think with Russell Lamson, this is a really great dynamic that can develop here.
Thank you, Jackie. And Mr. Hart, I was, I was going to cut you off, so if you weren't finished, please do.
That's fine. I'll get you later.
And Bob, just for your, for the entire council's knowledge, you know, our friends at the WDC fully support this project and you know how picky they are about what's going to go into that location and they're fully supportive of this project. Anybody else have questions of Jackie? Thank you, Jackie. Thanks for coming.
Right, thank you.
Making the special trip.
No problem.
Okay, Jerry.
Jerry Shatzler, 1829 West 7th Street. I guess my first question to what the young lady was saying there, Des Moines has been in serious financial trouble the last I read. The second thing is, this sounds a lot like socialism. And I don't say socialism is bad, but the trouble with socialism is then you get nationalism. Germany started out with socialism, Cuba started out with socialism, and so did Italy. That's the only thing I say and that's the only thing to be careful. It could go much further than you think it can. In fact, there was an article by Huff, I think it's called, they do a lot of reporting, and they said that we have a bunch of young people and I can understand it when I see the difference between public employees' wages and private people's wages that are very angry underneath. And we could see these people eventually riot, just like in Syria and Jordan. Another food for thought. I shan't entertain you with any more good ideas.
Thank you, Mr. Shatzler. Yes, sir.
Brent Dolls from 3538 Augusta Circle, Waterloo, Iowa. I first want to say that I'm not against low-income housing. I own a project in downtown Waterloo that has 84 low-income units in it at 500 Sycamore Street. I'm also the, one of the developers in the River Trail Project, which is a $7 million development on Sycamore and 8th and 7th. And I just want to say that I've been interested in this, this project for two years. Two years ago, I sat with the mayor and we talked about this project and some of the funding sources that were possibly available for this project. And one of the funding sources that is available is if you do put it in the low-income threshold. And we talked at that time that no one was interested in that credit. And so without that credit, at the time, I was not interested because we didn't have enough funding. Also at the time, no one had tried a market rate complex of any size. So we decided to start with River Trail Project and see how that went. And I was only committed to 24 units. Since then, we have the first 48 units leased and then we have the last two buildings going up and, and the last two buildings aren't even set to be done until August and we already have half of those units leased as well. Of our tenants, not one person would qualify for the 80% threshold. I believe the mayor is slightly misleading in saying that a couple could earn $42,000 and that's the median. The median income for a single person is $27,000. If you take 80% of that, that's $22,000. And to say 60% is much lower than that is, it's not that true. It's roughly about $17,000. $22,000 would be similar to $11 an hour job. We have, of the 72 units right now, we have close to 60 rented and we have two married people. Downtown living isn't necessarily meant for married people. There's a lot of couples that live in our apartments, but rarely do you find married people there. It's young people that are, they like to be out late at night, they like to enjoy some of the restaurants and Waterloo Blackhawks game and certain things like that. It's not, it's not meant for people that are slowing down, have a family. And then you say, well, it's only a little bit over half. Well, it's my experience that similar people like to stay in similar places. I own over 1,000 units in Waterloo, Sierra Falls. If you get one person that is a U&amp;I student at a complex, very soon the whole complex becomes U&amp;I students. If you get someone that works at a gym, very soon all are friends. It's, I mean, it works in any area of business. Friends follow friends, similar people follow similar people. I would love a chance of this project. I believe Sherman Associates is probably a great company. I think they do great work. I just want a shot at the project as well. Mine would be market rent. I have a deep passion for Waterloo. I went to Cigar School for 10 years, grew up blocks away from there. I went to Sierra Falls to go to college and then I moved back to Waterloo, which is a rarity. I think we can do much better with the site. If people go on the site, it's the most beautiful site that you can find in Waterloo. It is, it's immaculate. You can go there at night, day, it's, it's beautiful. Kids are playing in the park now. I just signed a concert that's going to be held there this summer with two people that have eight Grammys together. I'm committed to this site. Not saying that Sherman Associates isn't. They haven't sold a building in 35 years. That is great. But will they be here actively for the rest of their life? Will I? Yes. I'm committed to this area. I'd love a shot at the project. You keep telling me, Mayor, that there's other places for me to go. That must mean that there's other places for Sherman Associates to go as well. So if this is the best site in Waterloo, why do anything less than market rate rents with a great complex? I mean, this sets up so well. We're putting, what, $30 million in sportsplex? The Green Tech Works is supposed to be doing $50, $60 million. My project's $10 million. David Dietz and his company with JSA, they're putting in millions of dollars. Let's not sell ourselves short. Let's continue the work that you have started and continued in the downtown area. And if, if we come, both come to the table and their project is better than mine, I will not complain. All I ask is that my project could be considered as well as theirs. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Good comments. And as I told you in my email today, it's, it's hard to quantify how much we appreciate the work that you have done and are doing in Waterloo. You've stepped up along with JSA Development and a couple of other ones that, and have done some great work and it's tremendously appreciated that you're, you have made a commitment to Waterloo and, and we appreciate it deeply. Appreciate it. Counsel, any further questions? I'll answer Mr. Schmidt.
Well, I have one question and then one comment. On the first part of this, the JSA part, I guess I should say, I was the liaison to the Community Development Board a few years ago and I know we had a situation where there was somebody proposing to build some multifamily units and they had a family member that was on the board and so they had a potential conflict of interest. So I know there was some, there was either going to be some documentation required to identify that, or I think that board member ended up resigning, if I'm not mistaken. And so I guess my question would be carrying that through with JSA and with Mr. Walsh being the city attorney, is there any issue there, Rudy, or was that vetted or?
Where's your connection? I'm sorry.
Well, just the fact that, that Mr. Walsh would be the city attorney and then also because this is CDBG money, I'm asking, is that, that's my question.
I don't, okay. Go ahead, Rudy, and answer it. I just don't see the connection, but I'll, I'm waiting to see it. Go ahead.
Rudy Jones, Community Development Director. I can't say if there is, but just because of the relationship with him being attorney with the city, we're going to have our HUD office in Des Moines take a look at that and they'll address, and I think JSA will, has also submitted a documentation that either they will seek to get a waiver for even the appearance or see if HUD will allow them to bill with their attorney saying that it's not a conflict. So we, we view it as, even though it may not be, we have to take it as though there's the appearance and he just might have to do a disclosure depending upon what the state tells us.
So then would we want to approve this prior to that or would we want to approve this after those questions are answered, I guess is my question?
It probably will not be answered in the next couple of weeks. What we did, as you indicated with the prior situation, was we submitted our application and the state received the application while at the same time we were getting the potential conflict addressed. And at some point in time in the future, it was deemed to not be a conflict and the application was already in, so the state awarded it accordingly.
So this could possibly be subject to?
Subject to, yeah.
Another quick question, Rudy, or Noel, on the state and this particular pool of money, how much does the state have to, to give out?
They had $30 million for statewide allocation, which is possible that Cedar Rapids may get a chunk because they lost units and everything else is pretty much competitive statewide.
And so 3 million, no, we can't get a forecast?
I, no.
Depends upon the projects, huh?
No, no.
Mr. Schmidt, my apologies. You were talking about the JSA portion of the application. I thought you were talking Sherman. Now, I just didn't understand what you were talking about.
Gotcha.
I'm with you now. Okay. Any further questions? Mr. Jones, you look like you have a question.
Yeah, just a quick question. So how are 14 and 15 tied together?
Noel, you want to explain that? I had to ask Noel that today, so, and he did a much better job at explaining it than I could.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. And as Rudy noted, there's 30 million statewide. They broke that apart to 18 million for the large cities, entitlement cities, and then 12 million to the COGS for the smaller cities. So there's a little bit more of a breakdown for the 30 million. Each community can only submit two applications at a maximum of 3 million per project, just to kind of give you a better breakdown of maybe what our chances are. Those two items are linked. As part of the application process, the applicant must have site control. We definitely, because of the new state changes to development agreements and having to actually amend our urban renewal plans to districts and all that, to do any kind of development agreement, we would not have time to actually go through the full process. So the idea was to adopt the last item there as the intent to do a project with Sherman Associates so that they would be able to represent site control in the application process.
Noel, what's the timeframe on, on this application?
I believe they must be submitted by March 1st. Just to kind of give you a better breakdown of maybe what our chances are. Those two items are linked. As part of the application process, the applicant must have site control. We definitely, because of the new state changes to development agreements and having to actually amend our urban renewal plans to districts and all that, to do any kind of development agreement. We would not have time to actually go through the full process. So the idea was to adopt the last item there as the intent to do a project with Sherman Associates. So that they would be able to represent site control in the application process.
Noel, what's the timeframe on, on this application?
I believe they must be submitted by March first.
And when will we hear something? Do you know?
We're not sure on the timeline of the state.
Okay. Bob.
Bob, if I, so for Mr. Dollstrom, I got a question of what, do you have a project in mind? You have, have you worked on a project for this site?
Absolutely. I was given by the city the, the exact design that was made by the architect that works directly with the city. I'm sorry, the name is, what's that?
Vanwal.
Vanwal Company. And my project was going to replicate that. So exactly what the city had been planning in their long-range plan was exactly what I was going to try to duplicate in that spot. I was, one of the things that I was always uncomfortable about was promising something that I couldn't come through with. And at the time, I could not make a promise that I could keep, that I could absolutely develop on that project until I had done this other project. Now I'm ready to make that commitment and I've been asking, which I did send you a copy of the email. But I, I sent back in October asking again for access to this site. And so my response was, I was never given a response. And it's, it seems to me that that's, in that timeframe is when Sherman Associates came along. So I don't understand how if someone can ask to have a chance at a project, then someone else can come in and get the project without being heard. That, that seems, that seems unfair to me. And it seems unfair to the city to not have a chance to hear both projects if there's two willing parties trying to do the same thing.
May I ask a question?
That's cool.
Mr. Dollstrom, did you have a financing package all lined up for market rate units?
Yes, well, I, to say that you have a financing packet lined up is the same as they're saying. They're, they're going after their project and they'll have the financing. It's the exact same as I did at River Trail. I've shown the ability to do a $7 million project. This would be similar to that. It will be ten times as easy to now get the financing now that I've already done the project.
You have a track record.
At the time, it, it would be like saying, oh, this is possible. You know, I sat in a meeting with the mayor and Noel and some other people. And the thought of doing seventy-two market rate units seemed absurd a year ago. That seemed crazy. And it, and we had a timeframe of three years. Well, we're going to do them all in under a year. And so now that idea doesn't seem so crazy anymore.
I thought you were crazy.
Everyone did. That's okay.
Congratulations, by the way.
Mayor, one last question. In regards to the, the resolution of intent for development agreement. If there, if the, if the $3 million doesn't come through from CDBG funds, then what happens to the other five recommendations on the, the council communication? Does that, is everything null and void? Does it come right back to this? How does?
I would assume so, based on, you know, Sherman Associates talking about if they can't get that financing, that they would not go forward with the project. So we probably, you need to put some wording in the actual document or they would send us a communication saying that they are going to bow out if they weren't able to receive that award.
Jackie, could you speak to that? That's probably worth, worth noting. It was a good question. Please.
I would anticipate, like Noel said, in the, the larger document, having clauses that would allow those other, other items to expire. We would probably ask for right of first refusal, one more, one more chance to explore options without the CDBG funds. However, you know, it, it, like I said, it is very tough. This is an expensive site. But we haven't explored that far. As you know, we've been, we've been working very hard to get the application put together. The state, state of Iowa was very, how would you say, meticulous this time compared to some of their past application requirements.
Well, yeah, they're making sure we have our.
We, we should have our first application compared to this fifth round. And I think there's been a definite trend, which is good, which is positive.
I want to add something to that last. If, if, if we, if we do decide to approve fifteen, it would be nice if we had a specific timeframe in which they'd have to have the first right of refusal. In that case, so it can come right back to the market. So, you know, I wouldn't want this property held up for two years waiting if the council decides to do it. We can have a very minimal timeframe to put that back or?
I, I would think that wouldn't be a problem, no, but I don't know. Could we, could we put something in there? Because it, it appears apparent that when we are notified whether or not the CDBG money is awarded to the Sherman project, if it is, it's a go. If it isn't, it's not a go. So can we ink something to that effect if council so chooses?
I, I think it's at the council's discretion to do that. You, you'd probably want to have any kind of a timeline that you feel comfortable with going from the date that the state makes that decision. Since we don't know how long that may take them to make that decision, two months, four months. You might want to say, you know, if, if the council thought, hey, a year after the state decision or six months after the state decision.
Thirty days.
Or something like that.
Counsel, you want to weigh in on this at all? Are you up to speed enough to?
No, I'm not up to speed enough.
That never stops an attorney.
No, I think right now, is, is March first the?
March first is the deadline for the applications. We don't know when the award is going to be making, be made. But I mean, I, I, you know, with Mr. Hart's intent to, to make sure that this project either moves forward or doesn't, following the award or not award of the, of the project. I would think thirty days would be a sufficient amount of time.
If you're going to, if you're going to make significant changes in what has been discussed prior to this time, I think it needs to be moved then, adjusted. Or table for a week or something like that.
It says specifically in the language we receive, if the three million is not, it, it, the project won't proceed.
Isn't that sufficient then? I mean, if it's in that communication, it's there.
Yeah.
Like to move forward with this at this time and see what council's pleasure is. And with that understanding that that language is in there, that it won't move forward without that. Mr. Schmidt?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, that's okay.
Question for Mr. Dollstrom. So do I understand it correctly that your proposal would still require the $3 million or would not?
Would not, would not require that, no. You, you can only get that if you have the low-income threshold met with over fifty percent of your units. There's still quite a few tax credits available for market rate. This area can sustain a lot of different grants and tax incentives and still do a market rate project. It's interesting to me that we're doing this five days before it's due. It's, and Buck is so quick to make sure this gets passed tonight. That's, it seems like a rush. Let's, why do we have to make this decision tonight? I would like to say one more thing. All the people that have worked on my apartment complexes are from this town or Seer Falls. Can we say the same about a company that's coming from Minneapolis? If we're not going to get taxes for twenty years, not the full thing, why wouldn't we want to see some type of incentive for our city, for, for Waterloo and Seer Falls? Why, why should we? You know, I assume that they're, I don't know it, but I would assume that a lot of people, I know they brought a construction manager from outside of town for the last project. Why, why give this project away to another town and, and help Minneapolis get stronger when we can help Waterloo get stronger?
One other quick question. What, what kind of a tax abatement would you have in mind as far as the, the future goes? When we're talking about twenty years at forty-two percent in this proposal?
Well, obviously, the tax abatement will be a requirement for almost any project of that property. I, I think you'd be, I think I'd be pretty crazy to not believe that. I would, a similar to River Trail is what I would propose again. And so, yeah, there is some, and I, and I've heard some people in the crowd tonight talk about that seems, it seems like a really long time, twenty years. Or, you know, I would probably go after ten years because that's what I've been awarded on a different site. But a, a lot of the things would, would be very hard to do without that, especially if you didn't get the $3 million.
Thank you. Mr. Ray, I guess I, one other question I would have is item number fourteen, I think, is kind of an all or nothing? I mean, it's either.
We either approve the application or we don't.
But we've got both JSA and Sherman and, and nothing against Sherman. But, so we're, we don't have an opportunity to, to vote to support one and not support the other. Is that correct?
Well, I think you can make a motion to amend the, the current resolution. Steve, I think we always, council always has that option. You know, there's been a motion and a second as they were presented. You have the option to amend that motion if you'd like.
Well.
Understanding that, you know, that that's going to do the project in, but that's, that's your pleasure.
Right. I, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit concerned from a couple directions. One, as we saw today in the kind of emails that were going back and forth, it seems like if nothing else, there was at least, if not miscommunication, then misunderstanding between Mr. Dollstrom and some other folks at the city. And, you know, that stuff happens. But I, I also agree with the appearance that we're doing this, you know, again at the eleventh hour. And, and I always have a problem with that. So I would like to amend item number fourteen and split those two votes apart so that it identifies the $1,650,000 for JSA and the three million for Sherman and Associates.
Okay. Been a motion made?
I'll second it.
Okay. A motion and a second. To, let me see how we need, Madam Clerk, help me, would you please?
I would amend it to have two resolutions, one for submission of an application in the amount of $1,650,000 and the other in $3 million.
Okay. So there's going to be two resolutions. There would be fourteen and fourteen A.
Sure.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. So will we need another motion for fourteen, the new fourteen for $1,650,000?
If we make a motion to approve amending it, then we should take a new roll call on individual.
I, I have to take a, a vote on the, on the motion. Yeah, right? On the motion and the second. Sorry. Before we do anything, I need to take a, a vote on your motion and, and your second.
On the amendment.
On the amendment. So that would be a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So it passes unanimously that we're going to split those into two resolutions. Now, I need a motion for fourteen and let's change the amount to $1,650,000. And then I'll need another one for fourteen A for $3 million.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Steve.
Mr. Schmidt?
Okay. Say, so I'd like to adopt a resolution approving submission of application of the Iowa Economic Development Authority for, the first one's going to be three million, Susie?
Either way, you want to do it, Steve.
Three million dollars to be used on the multifamily rental unit production new construction program around five. And do we need to identify the contractor?
That's the Sherman, Sherman Associates application.
Right. And then you want me to do fourteen A also?
No, let's, let's do them one at a time. Okay, the motion's been made for $3 million for Sherman and Associates for their application. Need a second.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second for $3 million on item number fourteen. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not sure what we're doing here now.
You're voting whether or not to approve the submission of an application to ADA for $3 million from Sherman and Associates.
So Dollstrom is out of this, at this point.
This is not involving Mr. Dollstrom at all.
If you vote yes. This is for the community development has the opportunity to submit to, to development. And we're just splitting it apart.
This has, this has nothing to do with, with Mr. Dollstrom unless it fails. Then it puts Mr. Dollstrom right back in the seat.
But if this passes, Mr. Dollstrom's out of this project.
For the time being, for this project.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
And I, I'm sorry, I, I got one more question. Reading the statement on the council communication, it said that the site appear to be shovel-ready pending the request for other state program. What does it mean when we say that it has to be shovel-ready? Does the city, is the city entitled to do something for that? What does that mean? And it said.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. That's a good question. I mean, that's, it's a wording by the state. Obviously, I don't know if Jackie, if you have anything to add. Shovel-ready usually just means that the state feels confident that from when you would approve this, that construction would begin in a fairly fast process.
It doesn't, it has to be, you know.
There's a lot of work that still has to be done with the architect, you know, actually designing things and the site plan design and all that. But basically that it can proceed in a pretty efficient manner towards construction.
So we're not responsible for doing anything?
No, not anything other than what we'd normally do in our development agreements and providing the site.
Mr. Anderson, while you're still up there, what about the EPA? Do they play in this pool?
One of the funding sources that Sherman Associates has asked about and other, other developers would be eligible for is a brownfield, grayfield tax credit. Obviously, we've been able to build other things on this site. We do believe it still qualifies for brownfield, grayfield tax credit process and the program. So that would be something that any developer would be looking at going after on this site.
But the city would not be on the hook for, God forbid, if we find something cleaning it up first.
We've done in similar sites around there. We're, we're pretty confident with our process to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions at this point? There's a motion and a second on the table to approve the application for Sherman and Associates for $3 million. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Mayor, one more question.
Mr. Jones?
So as we've broken this out to fourteen and fourteen A with fourteen being the three million requested by Sherman. So then the fourteen request for Sherman and fifteen have to have similar votes, right? They both have to be yes or they both have to be no, but it can't be yes, no, right? Make that work.
Number fifteen speaks specifically to Sherman and Associates. It doesn't have anything to do with the JSA project, Mr. Jones. And if the resolution for the $3 million application for Sherman and Associates fails, it, it, it does bring a rather moot point, I think, to fifteen.
Right.
Let's see how fourteen goes. And. Yes, sir.
Maybe this is a question for Jackie because again, the part of the, part of the application is, is site control. I think what Mr. Jones is asking is if they vote yes to submit the application, but then you'd vote no on the resolution of intent. I don't know that would meet the state requirement for site control.
We, we do need fifteen to pass. If fourteen passes, we need fifteen to pass.
Right.
Didn't realize this was going to get so complicated. Madam Clerk, let's do a roll call vote on the motion that's on the table, please.
Mr. Greenwood?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty? Oops, sorry. Mr. Jones?
No.
Okay. The motion to support the application is, fails for Sherman and Associates. We're going to go on to fourteen A and we're going to see what that one does. I need a, a motion for that, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt? I'd like to adopt a resolution approving submission of application of the Iowa Economic Development Authority for $1,650,000 to be used on the multifamily rental unit production new construction program around five. And that would be with JSA Development LLC.
Second.
Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number fifteen, please. Oh, I'm sorry. We do, that's completely, well, we got motions on for thirteen, fourteen. We've disposed of fourteen. We need to vote on thirteen and fifteen.
Correct.
We read them all together, so it's going to be a roll call vote, please.
We should probably redo fifteen because it's, well, I guess they would vote support on it.
Well, yeah, they'll just, they can just vote.
Vote yes or no.
Please, please know that you're voting on thirteen and fifteen. So vote accordingly on thirteen and fifteen. And it is a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
On, on both?
And you want to vote no on that?
Don't tell him.
Yeah, don't tell him.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute.
No.
Let's, let's have a discussion because we just got done saying if that got defeated, then we would not want to support fifteen.
Right.
Correct? Okay. Can we have that discussion, Carolyn? Would that be all right?
Well, I think based upon.
Can I, Mayor, can I? Yeah.
I think based upon the information that was submitted to us about this project, if the $3 million of CDBG was not used to be able to leverage this, then they wouldn't proceed with the project. And we voted against having them.
That's correct.
Have the $3 million opportunity. So fifteen is a moot point in giving it to them now.
And I, I would agree with that, Mr. Hurt. And our, the only comment, Mr. Schmidt, is you probably shouldn't tell other council people how to vote. But, but it, it would be a moot point. probably shouldn't tell other council people how to vote, but it would be a moot point and it would be my recommendation that that's kind of a moot point at this time.
So, got that right?
So we're not redoing 15?
No, we're not redoing 15.
But we are voting on it right now.
You have to vote on it, so if you want to vote yes on both, just say yes on both. If you want to vote.
Yes on 13, no on 15.
Thank you.
Hurt?
Yes on 13 and because of prior, I'll vote no on 15.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes on 13, no on 15.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes on 13, no on 15.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes on 13, no on 15.
Very good. 13 passes, 15 fails. Boy, this has been a lesson in Robert's rules and procedures and everything else. But good comments, counsel. Thank you very much. Reserve comments. That is the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. It's time for oral comments. If anyone in the audience would like to speak to mayor or council regarding anything that we talked about tonight or anything else, please step to the microphone. Please give us your name and your address and limit your comments to three minutes.
Well, this is the last place I wanted to be, but Jerry Schatzler, 1829 West 7th. The reason I'm here, Ms. Cole made a statement, which was a true statement about do we want to get rid of policemen and firemen?
About what, Jerry?
Getting rid of policemen and firemen. We couldn't afford not to do that. But here's where you made a big error, Mayor. When KWWL was interviewing you, I don't know if the young lady was mesmerized.
Okay, point of information, KW didn't interview me. You've got.
I didn't say that. You were listening, Mayor. You were responding and not listening, Ms. Cole.
Okay.
Anyway, when KWWL was interviewing you, I don't really mesmerized by your good looks and personality or what.
A lot of people are, Jerry. Just, just go on, Jerry, please.
I'm sorry, Ms. Cole.
Yeah.
I don't want to take the low road. Anyway, at that time, if you would have went to the meeting that your perk went to, who I might say is highly competent, and then where they decided what you were going to do in the contracts with an arbitrator, you could have put in a, like Deere's, you were talking about how good they were, a difference of a payment for the new employees versus the old employees. You could have changed the pensions that they get, new versus old, like Deere did. But you chose not to do that. That's number one. Number two, and I only say this because it really bothers me, in '68, I was in Russia with my two sons when the Kritikruship was in power. The first thing I noticed is what I see going on in this country. We had people coming at us right and left of the Soviet government. The workers, like John Deere, and I hope it never happens to them, but they were living in the slums. And that's why their GNP went down because the workers said, hey, what's, what's the sense of this? I'm getting nothing. State people are getting everything. All I ask is you remember that, keep it in mind, and I think it's more important than you realize.
Thank you, Mr. Schatzler.
And I sure apologize, Ms. Cole.
Good evening. My name is Don Miller, 707 Stone Quarry Road, Waterloo, Iowa. I must apologize, my battery just went dead and my hearing aid, the pacemaker's still working.
Thank God.
I just am interested in seeing, getting a little information on this item 15 that you just were dispensed with. The courier article said that we would, if everything goes well, would donate that portion of the ground that's needed. And I was just wondering if down the road this materializes and we have X number of dollars invested in this ground, is there any way that we can include in the documents that when this property is sold, we can recover the money that we have put in, somewhat like a venture capitalist would do. They take a portion of the operation and benefit. Now, I think these are probably very good ideas, but the only land that seems to be doing well are the developers and the taxpayers are footing the bill to get these operations underway. So is there any way that we can negotiate and recover when this property is sold?
Mr. Bell, I'm not sure what you mean by when the property is sold. Certainly the intent.
Sooner or later, this facility that they want to build will be sold to someone. I may buy it or you may buy it. And at that time, I think we should be able to recover the money that we have invested in this in the first place. And my question is, is this a doable thing under law?
Mr. Miller, my answer to you is I don't know. I think that's an interesting concept that I will look into. Counselor? I'm again calling. And I told you, I told you tonight would be a short meeting with not much questions.
Mr. Miller, everyone is free to contract, but I imagine that would be a deal killer.
I'm sorry?
I imagine that would be a deal killer for most developers and cities.
You think it would be a deal killer?
I do. I think if you could negotiate it, more power to you, but I don't think anybody would sign on the dotted line on something like that.
Well, I think.
But it's an interesting concept.
I think we should at least consider it.
I think you're right and I think we should look into it.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think it's very interesting. Thank you. Mr. Zellifer's an attorney, not a businessman, so maybe we can. Is there anyone else?
My name is Marshall Eel, 3570 Logan Avenue.
Marshall, what's your last name again?
Eel.
Thank you, sir.
I-E-H-L.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the US Highway 63 construction. Okay, I know there already, the first phase of it from Donald Street down to Conger has already been approved. But my question is, is regard to the section from Conger to, on down to Dale Street. Now, there's been a problem eternally with the underpass, that ever since it was put in, it has leaked for 50 years when it was originally put in because there's an Artesian spring there. And years, you know, all year long, it's leaked, whether it's winter or summer, and driving down there, you're facing ice in the wintertime and, and water in the summertime all the time. Was there ever a proposal or a suggestion as to why an overpass was not just put in to reconstruct it and put an overpass instead of, instead of redoing it the same way with an underpass and leaky system?
Mr. Eel, the DOT's proposal with the new design is for an overpass there and to eliminate the.
Oh, they're going to eliminate it?
Well, that's one of the proposals.
Oh, it's one of the proposals?
It's not, nothing has been finalized yet, but that's one of the proposals is to put an overpass in.
To put an overpass?
Eric or Noel, do you want, either one of you want to speak to that, please?
Yeah, please, I'm sorry.
Eric Thorson, City, that is correct. The DOT is definitely committed to solving that problem. We've had a number of meetings with them regarding this project and they're in the very preliminary stages. They're doing some studies to look at what could be done with an underpass, but they also are considering an overpass. And we don't know which way it will go yet. They've got a lot of costs that they have to figure out. Each thing has different types of maintenance and that sort of thing, but they're looking at both and they're definitely, very definitely committed to solving that problem. They're tired of it, too.
Yeah. So hopefully we can, we'll fix it this time, Mr. Eel.
Okay, well, I've been worried about that for a long time.
We're going to, we're going to push for that option.
Okay.
My name is Ray, I'm his brother. I live at, Ray, you know, I live at, at.
3624.
3624.
Okay, Ray.
3624 Logan Avenue. But I'd like to, like to put a little information on this. My grandfather used to, he's, he's, he's long, long passed away, but he used to drive the train on the Illinois Central over there, and he said that when he, that in the 30s, when they, when they had this very big drought, that section there was always wet.
Yep.
Was always wet.
Yep, it's always wet now.
And my father always told me, if you're going to do something, do it right. Don't just do it to get it done, do it right so it's going to last.
Okay.
For, if we would have done it right 50 years ago, just think how much money you would have saved.
Well, and when you, when you talk about we, it's not a city highway, it's a state highway. It's the DOT that does all of these things.
We mean.
So, we'll, we'll get it done right this time. I'm quite sure of it.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Ray. Anyone else, please? All right.
Motion to receive and file oral comments and adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Mr. Counselor, are we adjourning to executive session under proper cause?
We are under section 20.17 of the code.